Okay. I'd like to call this meeting into order. Thank you all for being here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robert, would you please lead us?
Yes, bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege of being able to come here tonight in this very assembly. We thank you for the great country in which we live. We just ask you that you just help us to be thankful for all that we have. Well, we pray you'd be with the city commissioners tonight, city manager Ward, as they handle the business of the city. We thank you for everyone that's come this way. We pray that you'd bless each homeless representative here and help us go home to their respective places safely. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Robert. Item two, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, February 22nd, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item three, petitions and communications from the public and items from the audience. We have one person signed up, and this is an agenda item, so you didn't have to wait a week to do that. Richard Eubright, and talking about parking permit, and he's from Margaritaville Resort.
Yeah.
Come up here, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
And city council, appreciate the opportunity to talk real quick. As a local business operator and friends of many business operators and stuff in town, I'm here to advocate for my team in that in regards to the parking permit, and we would like to have that be held off. We see a challenge already, a labor market that's challenging, a labor market that really is not enough for all the businesses that we have in Sevier County as it is, let alone Gatlinburg. By increasing these parking funds, it will be detrimental, I think, to our labor force here in Gatlinburg with our existing staff, as well as trying to recruit new team members as well. And I think every business will feel that impact in our market and stuff. So I would just like to express that, and as you consider that vote, greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
So it's the fees?
For our staff and our employees, yes. You know what I mean? I get looking at two bucks a day, doesn't really sound like much, but to an employee that is driving all the way up here, succumbing to the traffic, working paycheck to paycheck, thirty bucks means a difference. You know what I mean? Increased costs, you know, with gas and travel and stuff like that. And, you know, when we are competing with Sevierville and Pigeon Forge, and we're all fighting for the same number of employees, you know what I mean? I mean, I lose employees, and I know they're going to Anacysta, or I lose employees, and I know they're going to...
Right.
...to the other side and stuff. So, you know, the labor shortage for the market is a challenge. I mean, we're importing labor, right, with J1s, H2Bs, because we don't have enough labor force here. So if we single those individuals out, it really will be detrimental to us.
Good question. Your employees pay for their own parking?
No, we are paying for their parking right now.
Okay.
They were paying, and we needed to supplement something from increased bonus to lure employees to our establishment and stuff, and that was one of the things we came up as an added benefit.
Do you buy the passes, or do you supplement their income to buy them?
We are supplementing their income, and then they go out and...
Okay, gotcha. So they come and buy the individual passes?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. That changes the math a bit on the way we've been looking at the number of purchases coming from individual people, because it's actually coming from one business. Sorry. It's coming from, a lot more coming from Margaritaville than maybe we initially looked at, is my point, if they're buying them as individuals, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for telling me that. That clears that up.
Okay. Thanks.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Item four, reports of boards and committees.
We have one.
Okay. Item five, city managers.
Yes, sir. Just a couple of items, and then I've asked Seth Butler, our Public Information Officer, to review with you some upcoming events. But before I do that, it's simply to call to your attention at the podium, updates on regular project status, updates and the convention center renovation project. So I did want to call that to your attention. And with that said, I'll ask you to share some of these special events that are upcoming.
Sure. Thank you. This week and next week are Sparkle Days. This week is March 21st through 25th is set aside for the collection, commercial, debris and cleanup, while next week, which is March 28th through the 1st, April 1st, is set aside for residential collection and cleanup. If you need to schedule a pickup time, you can call the street department at 865-430-1370. Also during Sparkle Days, the recreation department is encouraging neighborhood residents to form large litter pickup groups to clean up litter along the road sides and throughout their neighborhood. If you're in need of a trash bag or garbage bags for that cleanup, you can call the community center at 865-436-4990 for that. Upcoming this Saturday, the Gatlinburg Firefighters Association's annual Fit for Duty Firefighters 5K and 10K is this upcoming Saturday morning. All proceeds from that event benefit the Gatlinburg Firefighters Association Community Outreach Programs. You can pre-register for the event now through Friday evening at 10:00 PM at the discounted cost of $25 for the 5K or $35 for the 10K. And then there's day of registration on Saturday morning from 7:00 to 8:30. There's also a firefighter's challenge race on Saturday morning where firefighters wear their full turnout gear. And if you're looking to register for that or more information, you can see that on the city's website or the Gatlinburg Firefighters Association website. And finally, next Saturday, April the 2nd, the recreation department's holding a spring trout tournament and river cleanup. And this is a tournament that is in lieu of the annual tournament held by Greg Ward, who had to unfortunately cancel his event this year due to some health concerns. Pre-registration for that tournament is on Friday from noon until 2:30 at Herbert Hill Park, and day of registration is on Saturday, April the 2nd, from 6:00 to 7:30, also at the park. They're not charging entrance entry fee this year. In lieu of that, they are asking all participants to turn in at least one small bag of litter at the weigh-in to be eligible for the prizes at that event. And prizes will be given out for the biggest fish, the longest fish, and the individual with the most litter that's turned in. And if anybody needs any more information on that event, you can contact the trout, the city's trout facility manager, Travis Williams, at 865-436-7549.
And I think you said this to begin with, Seth, but it's being touted, the spring trout tournament and river cleanup event. Did you say river cleanup?
I do.
That's where the litter concept comes in, which is really pretty cool concept that our trout farm manager has come up with.
Okay. Can we have the follow-up with, like, how many people actually signed up for each one of those, for the firefighter and the trout? I'd like just to know some follow-up.
Sure.
See how good it is and keep up with it, because I think that trout cleanup is a great idea. I think it was a good...
Yes, we certainly can.
Well, I feel really stupid, because I was thinking cat litter the whole time. And until you said that, City Manager, thank you very much. Now I feel completely stupid. I don't need to be up here. I don't know why I cat litter. Why are they doing that with the trout farm? I thought maybe they're... I don't know. I deal with fish for a living, so anyway, sorry.
That's right. Is that it, Cindy?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Item six, all business, A, ordinance number 2586, an ordinance to amend section 15-607 in municipal code, and further being an ordinance to make additional changes to parking requirements, including changes to the parking rates for usage of the city parking facilities using monthly parking permits, not allow overnight or long-term parking. This is the second reading, passed first reading 22222. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. And we did have a workshop this afternoon, and Cindy, can we have a little discussion on this, please?
Yes, sir. I think, well, everyone was here for the workshop. The what is before you in this ordinance is what you passed at the last meeting, obviously, because that's what it says. This was a proposal to increase the $30 per month fee to 60 and the 60 to 90. We had discussion in the earlier workshop about perhaps not doing that, either not doing it or doing it maybe at a lesser amount. So everything else in the ordinance needs to get approved because it deals with overnight parking, and it deals with, Robert, help me with some of these, it deals with visitors not being able to buy these monthly permits because they got smart enough to know that they could buy the monthly permits and park cheaper if they were staying here any length of time. So it prohibits that. What else does it do, Robert?
It prohibits long-term parking.
Yeah, I said that, and overnight parking.
Basically, we sell them for a monthly time period, not half a month anymore.
Yeah. So there's some other items in the ordinance that we would like to retain as is.
When would that go into effect? April 1st, was it?
April.
Well, now, this ordinance, okay, the way the, what you're thinking about is the limitations is what we had talked about. The next item under new business is that.
You would give it April 6th.
Yeah. And basically, we would have done the same thing with the limitation. We had set effective April 1st, but we were trying to marry up that timeframe with the ordinance changes, meaning the rate changes mainly. So I don't know if that helps any, but that's...
So we're approving the old business now, and then under new business, we're going to amend and talk about the prices?
No, you need to amend and talk about prices here.
And now on this one, too. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I have a few thoughts on it, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Have a good time?
Yep.
I'm tortured on this one completely, just because, you know, I've got the same issues you do, by the way. You know, I'm next door to you, so we've got the same problems. And I guess in the end, the money doesn't matter. Like, if we charge 30 or 60 bucks, it ain't changing our life by nothing, right? Really, that part. Although, to put a fine point on it, we've been $30 for a billion years, as far as I can... It probably does need to go up, but with gas prices and everything, I'm okay with, like, holding study. I don't know how you guys feel. But I think, I think what my motion to amend would be, Mr. Mayor, is to keep the prices as they are right now, right, as, without, not with the change, the 30 and the 60. Just keep that. And then go ahead and take the city's recommendation on upping the limit to the 70 and 160.
I'll second that. I think that's proven that we bring the cost down to $30.
And the only...
And I think, maybe you might want to put in your motion something about, let's study this and...
Yeah, I think, I was just, that's what I was asking, when we go... Sorry, my apologies. It's, by the way, it's a cantina from Star Wars, if anybody was curious. I know a few people got it in this room. You're my people. But if we do that, I was trying to think, if this goes into effect in April, what's the right length of time to see if the limitations, which is what I'm most concerned about, help, right? So I was thinking initially, we could just look at spring, but by the time we get this thing rolled out...
Well, and let me add to that while you're saying that, Commissioner Dussier. If this is amended this evening, which is where it appears to be headed, it will require a third reading.
Ron, you and your rules.
Tell me about it.
You lawyers, I can't figure y'all out. Why don't we reevaluate at the end of summer?
Yeah.
Would that be fair?
It'd be fine.
Sometime, maybe on the August agenda, and let's look at it and just kind of see if anything changed with our traffic pattern. And the only reason of the limitations that I support limitations is because there are businesses that rely on that for visitors to use that deck as well, right? Like, that's the torture of it all. But I certainly don't want to burden you, and I don't want to burden me, and I don't want to burden those of us down there with increased prices and gas and everything so high right now. So anyway, that's my recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And that's an amending motion.
It's an amending motion.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, good speech. You did well.
Thanks, Seth.
That one's, that one's for you, Margaritaville. There you go.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you...
Happy staff.
I'm appreciating you coming to speak. So it's important that you let us know.
I think you need to take a vote on the main motion, because you've just amended. If you don't...
Okay, yeah, so we need one more vote on the main?
Yeah.
Okay.
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 Yeah, you're good. Just call for it.
Okay, call for the question. All in favor of the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Thank you.
Are we good now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Item seven, new business, A, discussion and consideration of modifying the previously approved limitation on the sale and use of monthly parking permits as at city parking facilities. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. And can we have discussion on this, please?
So, Robert, this is where we have reevaluated based upon concerns, based upon the high gas prices you were speaking of. And so this, what was approved at the last meeting was maximum 100 permits per business could be bought with 50 being able to be used at one time. This recommendation is 160 per business and 70 to be used at one time. Isn't it as simple as that?
Yeah, and they addressed that, but that was not actually in the ordinance. It's in this, it's in this memo, so that...
And that was an intentional thing to have the flexibility to change.
So we've already discussed that. So that's kind of what we're asking to do, is change those limits.
Well, as previously discussed, I make the motion, we go with the city's recommendation, the 70 and 160, with an evaluation in August of how it's working, same thing.
Okay. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item B, discussion and consideration of accepting the resignation of Don Smith as CE representative on the city commission. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. This is to accept Don's resignation. No further discussion needed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item C, discussion and consideration of making appointment to fill the unexpired term CE on city commission. Do I hear any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Kirby Smith to seat.
Okay. Any others? The nominations, B.C., still in favor of Kirby Smith, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item D, discussion and consideration of approving a professional services agreement with SRA architects related to sprinkler system repairs, breezeway/stairway repairs, and ADA improvements for city hall. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. And Cindy, can we have discussion on this?
Yes, sir. SRA, Mike Smilser is here this evening, and this is a project that has been hanging around for a while as it relates to some things that we did, I guess, two or three years ago. We also need to do window replacement. That is noted in Mike's contract, but we've actually already paid him for that. The amount of the contract is...
It's $32,000 is the total amount. We've paid him five, so it's about $26,000 after that.
This is a, these are funded projects between previous year's budget and this year's budget. So the money's there in the project count.
The money's there. Mike, anything you want to comment?
Yeah, the only comment I'd have is we're also including ADA parking.
Yeah.
To get access into city hall. We've got a civil engineer that's working on that. We've got a fire protection engineer that's working on replacing some of the piping in the sprinkler system that's deteriorating. Just need replacing. So that's the bulk of the work, is this ADA parking and the sprinkler system. And of course, the window replacement is part of it, but we've already done documents to accommodate that.
Very good. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item E, discussion and consideration of approving a trolley service contract with Greenfire Campground. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And is this the same as what we had in the past, Cindy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item F, discussion and consideration of approving a single bid to Whaley Construction LLC related to the Mills Park Basketball Court Improvements Project. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on this?
We can. It's what your pleasure is.
Sweet price. What's going on with the price on this baby? It went high. So, single bid...
Single bid over budget.
Is this what we wanted there, though? Was this what we envisioned for that court, where it'd be multi-use and the whole deal?
Yes, sir. With the nice personal court service, wall on the outside, fencing.
And just with prices going up, because prices have gone up everywhere, I'm guessing? Is it that?
Nobody, nobody else wanted to bid on it?
Nobody else wanted to bid, and we're doing some of the work ourselves, that's included in that price.
Okay. Good. Any other comments, questions?
When's, when's this supposed to be? It's going to be bid March 22nd, or it was bid March 22nd. When's the, when's the completion date?
It was bid a different date than March 22nd.
It's been on, it's been on February 24th. It was placed on this agenda. That's where, that's that date that you set the bomb.
Do we have a completion date?
It's 60 days. They can start work 60 days from today and then finish within 60 days.
Okay. Isn't this also known as the Ryan Dussier Basketball Court?
I absolutely do not play basketball. I want that stated for the record. I avoid all sports. Trust me.
How many people did we send this out to? Like, five or six? There's nobody here?
We sent it out, we sent it out to probably seven or eight different people, but we also subscribe to a service called Vendor Registry, where we put it on, we put it on our website, put it in the paper, and then we use Vendor Registry, where people from the area that have that subscription, which a lot of people get our bids that way. And we call, and we call people, too, if we don't get any bids, and this, you know, because we don't like single bids by anybody else, but it's just, it's just the climate that we've had to deal with the last several months.
Okay, very good. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item G, discussion and consideration of approving a single bid to Whaley Construction LLC related to the pavilion and restrooms remodeling project at Minna Park. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. And can we have discussion on this, please? Lawrence?
Lawrence, yeah. I mean, you know...
Go on, Lawrence.
I'm not, we're not big on single bids.
I know.
Never have been. So this was, this is a frustrating couple of items on the agenda, but it is what it is. People have, contractors have too much work to really participate in these competitive bidding processes.
Yep.
And, you know, the concern here, and I think we need to be real open about this, is that this project likewise is over budget, and the way to make it work money-wise is to grab some money out of a public restroom, four other public restrooms. We set aside how much?
$293.
And to grab that, grab basically $250,000 of that money. What's the full amount of this single bid?
Full amount is $498.
Basically, half a million. Okay.
$250,000 almost.
Yeah. And taking $250,000 out of the other public restroom account, that would leave 40, 50 grand to do a little bit of work on these other restrooms and then put in next year's budget the other four public restrooms. And the, just to, while I'm on a roll here, the, the other aspect of it is that, I'm glad you're seated, the ADA Minna Park project is now officially declared complete.
Oh, my God.
TDEC came in last...
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday. And honestly, part of the delay was on their part. And remember, they're a 50% funder of the original million-dollar project, and then we added to it, as you well know. So that project is complete, and the, you know, we, we had a couple of meetings up there back in the fall or something, maybe, not this fall, but the one before, probably. And to go ahead and really complete the project was to do these improvements to the pavilion and to the restrooms.
There's two sets of restrooms, just the pavilion and the tennis.
So what does it do to the pavilion?
What is this half-million-dollar buyout?
It's going to be re-siting all the buildings to make them look good with hardy board. You know, we have to further them out, putting guttering on all the buildings, redoing the bathrooms, demoing the bathrooms, refinishing the bathrooms, redoing the concrete floor, repairing the cracks, repolishing. If you've been up there, you'll notice there's pot marks and things in that flooring, repainting the ceiling, adding some large fans to keep people cooled in the summer.
Lighting.
Lighting.
The guttering, too, a lot.
Yeah, the guttering.
Are the bathrooms actually going to look nice?
Yes.
You know what I mean. Not Siberian Gulag.
Yes. And especially, I don't know if you've ever been in the tennis bathrooms. They're desperate.
I avoid all sports, so now I have. I have not been to the tennis bathroom, but...
So, you know, at one point, it's Minna Park now looks amazing.
Yeah, it does.
They've done a fabulous job, and we need to finish the whole job.
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor.
Which is the pavilion.
I totally agree. I hate the amount of money, but it's like you have a beautiful thing there, and then you've got this one ugly piece, and that, that thing is in bad shape.
Yeah. So a refreshing redo would be great.
Yeah, I think you'll be really happy with the way the buildings will complement the rest of the park as well.
And then Cindy, to your point, we're going to add extra money back in in the next budget cycle to fix everything else?
Yes.
And Lawrence, what's the update on the pickleball?
Pickleball, they're pouring concrete this week. They'll be laying asphalt next week and putting in fencing, so it's going to start looking a lot closer to completion.
Awesome.
And to add to what the city manager said, that we will be using some additional money to do the most pressing matters in the public restrooms, like some countertop replacements to make them look better.
Very good. Thank you, Lawrence. Any other comments, questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know I'm out of order, but I've...
No, you're never out.
What's the time period on this project?
They have put down that they could begin this in 60 to 90 days, and then complete within 60.
So they cannot start it until, for 60 days?
60, yes, ma'am.
To 90?
Yes, ma'am.
Cindy's thinking, why?
Yeah, exactly.
I think it's the same reason everyone, the lack of bids. Everyone's going to have a single bid.
Yeah, you said they got the one right before it, didn't you?
The other side of you, you're lucky to get anybody to show up.
Yeah. I mean, just getting a bid, I'm happy with.
Yeah, yeah.
In today's climate.
Okay, thank you, Lawrence. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item H, discussion and consideration of approving the use of the Gatlinburg Community Center for the Sevier County School System Fund and Fitness Day, May 19th, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. No discussion needed on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item I, discussion and consideration of making appointments to the rec board. Do I hear any nominations?
I make a motion that we reappoint Buster Flynn, Lester Flynn, Al Shirley, and Alan Cox, and Wilton Hilton, like I said, that they will like to continue, so I make that motion.
Any other nominations? That motion is seconded. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item J, discussion and consideration of declaring certain city items as surplus. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Ryan's favorite part of the meeting.
Well, they were boring, this. There's chairs and, it was boring, anyway. Sell them if you can.
Okay. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unscheduled items. Start with Commissioner Dussier.
I have nothing today, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Reagan.
I just want to thank Mr. Smith for his time, like we did last time, and his recognition. I'm looking forward to working with Kirby going forward. I think he's going to be a good asset and a good thing to our commissioners here. And I also would like to say to, happy birthday to my mom perfectly. Today is her birthday, and she turns 79 today.
Wow, that's awesome.
Happy birthday. Vice Mayor McCown.
I don't, I'd like to let Don know that I've enjoyed working with him the last few years, since he's been on it longer than I have, but we're going to miss him. He's been, he was a fine commissioner and a good friend, and we're missing him.
Thank you, sir. And I'll echo that. Don was just as good as they come, and Kirby's going to be a good one, and happy that we chose him. And want to just compliment Gatlinburg Pittman Girls Basketball Team going to state.
Did really well.
And doing really well. And I know Cindy was at the games, and Greg, I think, made it in some of the games. And it was a tough way to end, but they really did great. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We are adjourned. And we do have a beer board.
Yes, sir. I'll go ahead and call that to order quickly. The first item, the first item on the agenda is that. The second is approval of minutes of the January 18, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those are approved. The only item... And so approved. The only item on the agenda otherwise, other than adjournment, is new business, discussion and consideration of approving an on-premise beer permit for Aki LLC, DBA D-Atrium, 432 Parkway. All departments have signed off. This would, if your desire is to approve, it would need to be contention upon receipt of the sales tax and Health Department certificates. So, otherwise, it's good to go. So is there a motion to approve with those continued?
So moved. Second.
And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's done. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Yep.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
You all need to sign.